Distinguished guests, Kauanians, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Kuanos Club of Kingsport's first 2024 candidate forum. I'm Mary Lee Davis, a member of the Kingsport-Kuanos Civic and Business Affairs Committee, and it's my pleasure to serve as your moderator today for today's forum. As Kauanians, we have a very strong commitment to civic responsibility and providing service to this community and indeed to the world. Today is the very first candidate forum that we're having in 2024, and we remind you that Kuanos is a global organization dedicated to improving the world one child and one community at a time. And this year, the Kuanos Club of Kingsport is proudly celebrating our 100th year of service, the Kingsport and its children. Our motto, in fact, is serving the children of the world. So what could be more appropriate than to have our first candidate forum in 2024, getting to know the candidates for the Kingsport Board of Education? The guidelines for today's forum are each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, one minute to respond to each of the forum questions, and one minute for a closing statement. Our respected timekeeper Admiral John McKinley will provide each candidate with a 15-second alert. Admiral is now showing and demonstrating to the candidates what that looks like. We're delighted that all four school board candidates are with us here today: Julie Byers, Todd Golden, Jamie Jackson, and Philip Marks. Candidates, please use the microphone that we will be passing to provide your answers, and please speak directly into the microphone in order that everyone in the audience can hear your responses. We will start with the candidates' opening statements, beginning with Jamie Jackson.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. Kuanos is very dear to me. Like you said, my dad was a Kauanian for many years, and I did receive a scholarship for college from the Kuanos organization that helped me pay for my tuition, so I deeply appreciate you all. I'm very passionate about the Board of Education. Obviously, the future of Kingsport is in our children and educating them. And part of that education, to me, that is so important is the career technical education. My husband owns a construction company, and we've seen a decrease in the skilled laborers coming out of high school. And a few years ago, several years ago, we had a conversation about, okay, so more than talk the talk, where's the walk? What can we do to get to be active, to take an active role in helping the school system provide more skilled laborers to our companies in the area? So I jumped on board, running for the Board of Education. I'm honored to do so, and I would love to serve.
My name is Philip Marshall, and I'm really running for two reasons: excellent education for the students and having great teachers. I have three young children who are in Kingsport City Schools, and I also have a wife who teaches. I'm also a product of the system. I graduated DB in 2003, and I know the longstanding tradition of excellent education and great teachers that Kingsport City has. And I want to be sure that we can maintain that, not only for my kids, but for all kids who are currently enrolled. In the future, Kingsport really relies on that. So those are my primary objectives to focus on. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Byers. Those that knew me before I got married still call me Julie Brinker. Many people in the community from a little age call me Miss Julie or even Coach, but my favorite name is Mom. I have three kids who graduated from Dobbins Bennett High School. They spent their entire careers through the Kingsport City School System and fabulous education. They're all in college now. I'm running because it's great to be a part. I've been part of the school board this is my fifth year, to be part of the system that was ranked to be the best place to teach in Tennessee in 2023. That's no small feat. We have great teachers here. We need to maintain those teachers. Our students are first and foremost. We need to make sure that every student has the opportunity to learn in a safe environment and have a fair education. We have had some challenges through COVID. We are still overcoming those, but we're making progress. But those are the reasons I'm running, and that's who I am.
I'll make sure I give my full pedigree. Last time, I think I mentioned that we moved from California, my wife and I, and I did not mention that I'm from Georgia. I am not a Californian. That makes a difference around here. No, not denigrating California. But I was raised, one of seven children. My mother was a homemaker. My father was a clinical psychologist, worked for a local community college. So I have a deep, rich history in education. I've been on the board for about a decade now, and it has been a labor of passion and of love to see all these children, to be able to make sure that we are able to hold a steady hand on the wheel of this great city and this great education system. This is the thing that pulls people into the city. When we moved here, we moved here specifically for the educational system. If... There's a whole lot more, but 15 seconds isn't going to cut it, so I'll leave it at that.
We'll now begin our questioning, and we'll be starting with Julie Byers. Describe what you believe is the ideal amount of involvement that a school board member should have in the day-to-day operations of the Kingsport School District.
A school board member really does not get involved in the day-to-day operations of the school. The school board member's role is to set policy and to help enforce policy. We make sure we have many parents who come to the school board for various issues. Most of them are complaints. We make sure before the school board jumps in that they follow the chain of command. We really want to make sure that parents aren't just coming to the school board and the school board wreaking havoc by circumventing the system. So we ask the parents to make sure they work with the principals first, and then they can go to the superintendent and then us. So really, the school board sets policy that should protect all of our children, all of our staff, and we should not be involved in the actual day-to-day. But we are definitely here for our staff if they have any concerns, but we'd rather our parents go through the chain of command.
Same question.
Same question.
Yeah, she pretty much gave the same answer that I would give. It's no more different than what the day-to-day operations would be if your BMA or your mayor would be involved in that. They're not getting out there involving themselves. We have one employee, and that is the superintendent of the schools. That's it. So the board would set policy, the board would guide and help. But as far as the day-to-day operations, we don't involve ourselves in that. I will say, however, parents should be involved in a day-to-day operation. Parents should be absolutely involved in every single facet of their child's life and be supportive of the system. The system is here to work hand-in-hand with parents. They're not there to run counter to the parents. They're not there to argue with the parents. They're there to help educate the child because it takes a community to be able to raise those children.
As a school board member, like they were saying, I would definitely plan to support our superintendent and then be there to field questions at meetings from parents, from other professionals. On a... As a personal note, though, I do spend time in our schools. I volunteer on a regular basis. I love to go by Core Cox Academy, which is an academy where some of our more behaviorally challenged students abide and learn. And I like to spend some time there on a personal basis. So I'm assuming that if I'm on the school board, I may end up hearing, inadvertently hearing maybe some issues or some successes that I could share or even some challenges. So although I don't plan to use my school board influence to be involved in the day-to-day activity, I am involved in the day-to-day activity. I do visit my daughter occasionally for lunch. And in the cosmetology program, I've dropped off some supplies. So there are times that I'm interacting, and I do continue, plan to continue that and even, maybe even more so, visiting and just dropping in to some of my teacher friends.
I would, just to echo what they had said, it's not... Tim Dean said it best. He said, "Your role as a Board of Education member is to govern, is not to micromanage the schools day-to-day." I think that's kind of a good oversight view as to how I would look at it. However, I do think it's important to be aware of what's going on in the schools. And that does not mean manage the problems themselves, but just to know what's going on, listen to the teachers, talk to the parents and the students, just so that everybody's on the same page. But there's no extent of management that goes on with the BOE in the schools.
Our second question. The Kingsport Board of Education and the Kingsport Board of Mayor and Alderman have recently agreed, in theory, to build two new elementary schools, which would consolidate some of the older schools and provide much-needed capacity for the remaining elementary schools because of redistricting. First, is this a plan that you can support? Secondly, what are your thoughts about where any new schools might be located? And we will start with Mr. Todd Golden.
Thank you.
We don't have a mic.
Thank you. Well, that's a hot topic right there. So we depend heavily as a board on what the GIS surveys say, where the growth is occurring. And typically, you want to build a school where the growth is occurring. We've been blessed, because this is such a wonderful area, that we've had a lot of out-of-state people move into this area. A lot of people from Tennessee have moved here as well. And so you'll want to place that in those areas. As far as consolidation, some of our... I think the average age of our schools is over 75 years old. They're old schools. We can put more money into them, but when it becomes more feasible to build a new one as opposed to renovating the old one, that's where you have to make that decision. All that having been said, all of this comes down to budget and what the city can actually afford to do and what we as taxpayers are willing to do. And those are sacrosanct funds, and that's how I view them as things that we do as a community, which is what we are elected to do is to reflect your opinions.
The BMA is fabulous about supporting the BOE initiatives. We are very lucky as a community to be able to have that kind of support into our schools. As Mr. Golden said, we have our schools that are over 75 years old. We have looked at consolidation. We've looked at rebuilding. We've looked at closure. We've looked at every possible scenario, I believe. The two schools in question about trying to build in that area are Kennedy and Roosevelt. They are some of our... Two of our smaller schools, and poor little Roosevelt needs a newer something fierce. Those kids are coming to school and frequently having water running around them. We have buckets and trash cans. Our maintenance people are doing the best that they can. But it's really hard to learn in an environment that is not friendly, you know? And it stifles the kids' learning, it stifles the teachers. So that's why we're looking at building new schools, and we just have to figure out where the growth is, where the needs are, and let's make sure that our kids can learn in a safe environment and have the facilities known to our standards.
I think this is, again, a difficult question. I think it would take me some research to really dive in. I visited both Kennedy and Roosevelt and even Jackson before it was closed. And like I said, over at Core Cox, which definitely could use some renovation. So I see the need and weighing the building of a new building as opposed to renovating what we've got. I would love to look at those numbers. My husband's a contractor. He's promised to help me understand some of the quotes. I did a lot of the corporate finance for our company as it was growing through the years and taking in those bids and being a part of that process. But I will vow to spend time researching, looking at other facilities, looking at historical areas that are similar to Kingsport and what they've done. I do love to research. It's one of my iPads, stay up late, Nathan watches the crime show, and I'm researching. So I do vow to spend some time on this topic because I think it's a very important one.
Once again, I'm glad that the people who have been on the board for a while answered these questions first because these are very hard questions. Being a lifelong Kingsport resident and also a previous student in the system, I've seen firsthand how a lot of the buildings have aged. And it's always a difficult conversation to price out cost to build versus cost to renovate. And being fiscally responsible and balancing a budget is also part of that process. So as responsibly as possible, sometimes it makes sense to build a new place. And it goes back to what Mr. Golden said about the surveys of where the growth is happening. These are good problems because we're getting students, and Kingsport is growing. So it's rough pains, if anything, which is a positive. But we do have to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer money in that process as well.
Thank you. Our next question is, how much emphasis and funding do you think the district should place on its arts programs? And do you think these students in the variety of arts programs that we have should be regularly competing at the state and national levels? We'll go back... Julie, you may start with that one.
That's a fun question. The arts program, I think, are spectacular at Dobbins Bennett, and it's even filtering down into our middle schools and even our elementary schools. One of our fabulous things that we do is we actually have a little art show at the Administrative Center downtown Kingsport that showcases the elementary school kids' artworks on a regular basis. We all know that our band is a top-notch, national championship band. That does not come easily. There are many, many, many dollars and many, many, many hours put into achieving a band of that level. Our Winter Guard, as you know, won a world championship last year. That came actually with a very tiny budget, and they were reusing other props. So our acapella group has won numerous awards. I think it's a great feature because not everybody's going to be an athlete. Not everybody is a top-notch scholar, but... And not everybody's an artist. I am not, but I do promote the arts.
I almost got it. Almost.
These are some of the best questions. I love these. So you may not realize, but maybe you do. Kingsport is a title system, meaning that we have over 50% free and reduced. So if you look at where we place on the arts, we punch way above our weight, and that is due in no small part to this right here, to the community involvement. Because as much as we can fund and as much as we'll continue to fund, it pales in comparison to what the system or what the community does as far as boosters and parents. So absolutely. Oh, I've graduated two children through the KCS system. Both were in band. I absolutely believe in the arts. You have the lowest... You have the highest number of graduates and the lowest amount of dropouts, the lowest number of teenage pregnancies, and lowest amount of crime when you have a positive arts program. You look across the country, arts are what saves kids, what gives them a purpose, what gives them teamwork, and it teaches them more than anything else that we really do.
Oh, okay. The first time I ever thought about this topic was actually when Todd's brother spoke after a band competition two or three years ago, and he mentioned the correlation between art success and educational success. And we are very fortunate to have such a strong arts program here. I think especially post-COVID, where everybody was home and alone, giving people, especially kids, an avenue to community and purpose is a really important thing. And the arts are one way that we can do that, whether it be band or pottery. My kids are in elementary school, so they're not up to anything beyond really coloring. But also Lucy, my oldest, just did a school project, and it was a poster board project that incorporated arts in science in so many different ways that we can increase education through those avenues as well. So very important.
I do fully support our arts program. I think that spending money on kids' creativity is a beautiful way for our children to express themselves. I would love to see us even solicit the community a bit more. So when we're talking about funding, would it be possible for us to solicit community funds a little bit overusing our district funds? Because I would like to see some of our... More of our district funds go into partnerships with CTE programs that could even partner with some of our arts as well. So you've got an expression with your art, but then you're also able to get a certification or a license in something that allows you to be more artistic. For instance, my daughter is getting a cosmetology license, but part of that is nail art. She's a nail artist herself. So being able to take classes in nail art or tiny art is important for her. So I see those things working together. But I would love our district funds to go a little bit more toward education and maybe soliciting our strong community support for our arts program.
I would like applause on all of those responses. Each of you said something different, but yet so affirmative about how important and the different aspects on that question. So again, for all four of you, thank you so very much. Our next question. How last year that the state had made Hamilton and Knox Counties eligible to use school vouchers? And while Hamilton County accepted, Knox County did not. Have you studied or what is your understanding about why Knox County did not and how they argued against accepting? Of course, we know that Shelby and Davidson County were eligible the year before and agreed to as well. Let us start with Jamie.
Well, I have to be completely honest. I'm not sure exactly why Knox County chose to not accept the voucher. I do apologize. I did not do my homework on that one. I personally am not in favor of the voucher system, simply because we have an award-winning, top-notch education system here in Upper East Tennessee in Kingsport. And I feel as if monies are sent elsewhere, it's going to hurt our school system. I'm not sure that those that are going to be using those vouchers at private facilities, those private schools, are not just going to increase their tuition. Why would they not? I mean, they're going to get vouchers. They could just increase tuition, and so then it's just going to be that much more difficult for students to even use them effectively. I'm a strong supporter in the public education system. I did not go to public school. I actually went to private school, and I said my children will never go to private school. They will go to the top-notch, top teachers in our area, and we are so blessed. And I would love to see our funding stay in the public school system.
Mr. Marshall, yes?
Like Jamie, I'm unsure as to why the choice was made for those different systems to make the different choices. But I sound similar to her when it comes to vouchers in general. My biggest concern is removal of those funds from the public education system. And in an area like we have where public education is so great, I fear that that would remove some of the excellence that we have. I also think, like Jamie said, you don't have to look far back into when college loans were guaranteed by the federal government to see what happened to tuition rates in the past 10, 12 years. I think the same thing would happen. It's a supply and demand issue. And if more people have access to those funds and they go to these private institutions, then the fees for those institutions are going to go up. I think it's a solution to an illness that is better solved by a different way.
Having spent two days in Nashville earlier this week, this was a very hot topic. Nashville, I mean, I'm sorry, Knoxville decided against vouchers because they really did see the writing on the wall. When you look at vouchers, the state has said, oh, we've put a whole separate bucket of money aside to cover vouchers. It's not going to impact your public school system. But they're paying us per child. So if we lose those children to a private school, yes, it does impact our dollars. And those dollars are already accounted for in our budget. In reality, if you look at a student that they are targeting, who is a low-income student who needs opportunities, trying to give parents choices, we're talking about kids traveling an hour away to get to school. The tuition is paid $7,000. Many tuitions are $15,000. Who's covering the other $8,000? Who's covering the uniforms? Who's covering the books? And how is that child going to get there? It's just taking money from us.
I'm like a dog.
Almost got it with reach out. All these answers are great. This is exactly the reason Knox rejected it is because they realized the cost of their property taxes were going to skyrocket because of that. When you extract those dollars, what you end up doing is actually helping out the wealthier, higher-end families to move those dollars into private. Private institutions also are not held to the same standards as the public institutions, so you never see apples-to-apples comparison. This is probably why Jamie is adamant about sending her kids to public schools because you can actually compare these two. All politics are local politics. The higher up it gets, to the state and the federal level, they ignore us. This is why we're having this type of forum, is to be able to understand the significance of these decisions and why Knox rejected those is because they listened to their constituents.
Let us thank them for their enlightened responses. And now, please give your best argument that you would make to your regional legislators as to why public schools, like Kingsport's, which have a history of excellence and strong public and local government support, should have to face the challenge of unrestrained vouchers. We'll start Jamie with you.
So you're asking how we would speak to our legislators?
If you were right now giving that response to the question?
I think that I would say, let's look at Kingsport's record. Let's look at what we're doing in Kingsport successfully with our students. Let's look at our graduation record. Let's look at what certifications and licenses and diplomas that students are earning while they're in high school. Those opportunities are not there in the public and the private sector. So I would say, transportation is a huge barrier for students that might want to be looking for a different opportunity. Maybe they want to go to a different school system or a private school. Like what Julie said, I thought the same thing. How are they going to get there? Parents are already having a difficult time transporting students. So I think that's a barrier that's almost insurmountable. That would be a big barrier for our rural areas especially. We're not set up for vouchers because we're not set up to transport students all over the tri-cities. But the biggest reason is we're successful. Why rock the boat?
Yeah, I agree with everything Jamie said. It's... The proof is in the pudding. We don't need it just because we don't want it. It's because we're already successful at what we're doing. And when you do throw in, you know, I commuted to ETSU for undergrad school, and you know, that's only 30 minutes, but it's 30 minutes of interstate driving. So if you have a kid who lives, let's say, on West Stone Drive, who decides he wants to go somewhere on the far east side of Kingsport or even almost to Johnson City, how are you going to transport the kids who make those decisions? You're creating more issues than you're solving when you do things like that. So that's one of my stances.
A single mom working full-time, trying to make the best education choice for her child. How is her child going to get to that school? Public transportation won't get them there. Public schools, I mean, I'm sorry, private schools don't have to accept all the children. Some of the differences in tuition could be waived if the child was a stellar athlete. Most of the kids won't meet the criteria. Why take the money from Kingsport City Schools or any of the schools? Look at some of the Nashville's schools, suburb schools. They are top-notch as well. The dollars that we get from the state are not being wasted. They are put back into our students. Kingsport City has numerous AP courses, has numerous CTE courses. They're not going to get that in the private. They also have the fabulous arts program. They can get some of that in the private, not to the level that we have.
So this system will ultimately destroy the rural communities. It will be the great sucking sound of all the kids that can get out of those systems into the other systems that are neighboring close enough to where they can attend, and it will extract all the dollars out of those systems that desperately need it. I don't want to destroy Hawkins or Sullivan or Washington County school systems. They need all the help they can get, and the rising tide raises all ships. There's a better way to do it. So my plea to the state legislature, if they'd listen, is don't do this. There's a better solution. And sit down with your local school board. Don't ignore them like they did with the third-grade retention law. Actually, listen to them, and they can give you the right way to do it.
Let's thank our candidates. Our next question. What challenges do you see that the Lakeway Tri-Cities Christian Schools creates for the Kingsport City Schools since they are well-funded, have taken over a prime location in Colonial Heights, and are building a brand-new school on the west side of Kingsport? side of Kingsport? Please share your thoughts. And Julie, we'll start with you.
Lakewood Christian does have a tremendous amount of funding. And yes, they took over the Colonial Heights Middle School, and they have property all around the tri-cities. But when you step and look at the opportunities that Lakewood Christian offers versus what Kingsport City Schools offers, there's no comparison. They've put a lot of money into their sports facilities, but they're not the same level as what we have at Dobbins-Bennett and what we're working towards with both of our middle schools. The academics that Kingsport offers, as I mentioned a minute ago, with AP courses, our arts program, our band program, Lakeside is not able to compete with what we have. So it's really not an apples-and-apples comparison. Kingsport also is held to higher standards on testing, and it better prepare our students for college than what we're seeing out of some of the other private schools. And we think that that trend will continue, and I'm just glad to be a part of it and see that growth, and we are going to outshine Lakewood.
Is it Lakeside?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just create names.
I go back to something that I mentioned previously. Well, there's a reason why that's coming into the area, because of culture. The moral fabric of society has been being torn apart. And the reason why Christian academies, Christian schools are coming in to favor is because parents want their children to be in an area that is predominantly conservative. This is a conservative area. It just is. And so they want those same ideals. They don't want their kids to have to face some of those same challenges. And so they look at this as a safe harbor. Apples-to-apples, they do not compare because they do not have the same systems that have been built across 100 years here. So we give children a better pipeline into the, into university systems and into jobs versus that. But as far as the conservative nature that you're looking for, these are all Republicans. We're all running as Republicans. And so I would ask the question, where do we stand as in some of those ideals? And how does that inculcate and follow down through the children, is that tone from the top?
All right, we have a couple of students.
Yes, that would be in progress.
That was pre-applause. Thank you. I feel very passionately about this, because as a former special ed teacher, I don't think I might have mentioned that, but I am a former teacher. And I taught special education. Those students are so important to me, and we give them an amazing education in the public school system. We have highly-trained professionals that have gone to school for four, six, eight-plus years to educate all of our students, but especially our special needs population. And that opportunity does not exist at that level in the private school sector. And we see a lot of children with learning disabilities that continue to struggle and just think that they're poor performers, their self-esteem is low. And it's really unfortunate. I saw that because I was asked to be a mentor to a private school where they do a senior thesis and they need a mentor. And I mentored three students at Providence Academy. And what I saw broke my heart. I saw struggling special needs students that were undiagnosed, and I saw outdated curriculum. And these parents are spending thousands of dollars. We're blessed in Kingsport, and we have nothing to fear from Lakeway.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said so far. I think I would tell folks, advise parents that the education you're going to get, the athletic experience, whatever your kids are into, it's going to be better served in Kingsport City Schools than a private school like Lakeway. But I think we do have to ask ourselves, what's the primary reason some of these folks are leaving? And I think that comes down to, kind of like what Todd alluded to, I think it's where parents may value the values that are instilled in schools, as well as the education. And they're balancing those two things, and they're trying to make the best decision for their children. So if we can better, as a school system, encourage the parents that we are doing the best we can to maintain conservative values in the school systems here, I think we'll keep a lot of the kids that would go to places like Lakeway.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, let's thank them for their responses. Our next question, since achieving third-grade reading level by the third grade is considered essential to long-term learning, as well as for success in fourth grade or beyond, how can the Kingsport City Schools promote reading proficiency in the demographically-challenged schools that were mentioned earlier, for example? And then, do you support focusing on after-school and summer programs? And if so, how should it be funded? Let's start with Todd.
I think an educator came up with these questions. Man, these are the, these are interesting. This makes you think. No, absolutely, I encourage after-school programs. It's going to have to be funded from the schools. We're not going to be able to get funding from externally. We have been doing that, especially with the third-grade retention law. That was, I understood the why behind it, but it was misplaced the way they executed it. There should have been more implementation at the local level and adjudication here, instead of done at the state level. But that having been said, encourage and entice and show children how reading is fun, right? They need to see their parents reading, because if they see their parents reading, they realize this is something they're, they mimic what they see us do. So even as a community, just be caught reading in front of kids. Go inside the system and read with them. You do those things, and you entice them to be able to read, and then they'll realize this is important.
The third-grade retention law got a lot of visibility. Part of it is that group of third graders, that was the first year of normal school that those children had. Their kindergarten year was cut short. Their first grade year, a lot of them didn't attend school. They did virtual school. They were taught at home. And if they were in school, they were taught behind masks. And so the kids couldn't learn to read lips. They couldn't hear. They couldn't enunciate. So that group of kids really failed during COVID. And you can't point fingers at anybody. It just is what it is. But we are very grateful, too, the Kiwanis Club especially. You all go out to Roosevelt and Kennedy, and you spend your time helping those kids read. We need to embrace that more. We need to get more of our community people into those schools to help, because a lot of those parents can't read, and that's why they are where they are.
I love this. Reading is so important. And as a special ed teacher, I spent the bulk of my day teaching reading. I was blessed to actually get to teach my own students. And you think, oh, that's strange, Jamie. Why would you not teach your own students? Because now, many of our special needs students, once they're diagnosed, are sent to their typically developing, we call them the regular classroom, and they're not spending time in the special ed classroom. The teachers have to write the IEPs. They do all the paperwork, and then they send them out with assistants. These assistants are minimum wage, maybe probably more in Kingsport City, but they are uneducated, they are not trained, and they are sent to, with our special needs students, to assist in the regular classroom. I oppose that. I want our students to be taught reading and math, the core curriculum, by our special needs teachers, so that our teachers can focus on those students. But reading is paramount. If we can spend more time reading, whether it's by fun or just education, reading, science materials, our kids will improve. But reading is important, and I think we need to focus on that in the basics, in the especially elementary years.
I do think this is something that Kingsport does well. And I'm biased because my wife is a teacher, but I know the emphasis that goes into pre-third-grade reading comprehension. And a lot of it is due to the amount of growth that happens in a child's mind in that age range. I mean, it's huge to go from recognizing letters to actually comprehending what you're reading is a massive jump. So I think Kingsport does a good job. The biggest thing, I think, I think with reading, it takes time, and with time, parents work. And then you have technology that gets into that as well. It's a multifaceted issue. But exposure at my house is what's worked the best. I just, I read to my kids. We try to get off the phone, get off the tablet, turn off the TV, spend time in books. One thing that Kingsport does well, at Johnson, they have an after-school program specifically focused on Harry Potter. So somehow to get them to read, focus on imagination, little things like that go a long way.
And with all due respect, it's nice to see the notes that the media is taking on our questions, each of them so well-poised. The next question, Dobbins Bennett has been a leader in career technical educational offerings. Last year, Tennessee began funding five dual enrollment courses per student in high school. Has the Kingsport City Schools discussed how they might use a separate fund to support more students' dual enrollments beyond the five courses? This has a second part. And how can we help more Dobbins Bennett students to not only receive their certification in a trade, but also be a bit closer to an associate degree at Northeast State when they receive simultaneously the Dobbins Bennett diploma? I'm going to let those say. Ben involved a little more with this. Julie, we'll start with you.
I love this question. Dobbins Bennett has always, not always, in the past several years, really promoted the CTE. In the past few years, they started the program with the work-based learning. That allows those with career aspirations to get out into the actual workforce and work with companies in the community, and see what their degree might get them. Are they really interested? Some of them go to work-based learning, spend a semester there, and go, I don't really want to do this. And it ends up saving a lot of money on their college degree, and they may change their focus. We are very lucky that we do have Northeast State to do dual enrollment with us, because we have many students who earn an associate's degree before they earn their high school diploma. So Dobbins Bennett and Kingsport City are very focused on the CTE curriculum, and we intend to keep pushing that, because not every child is designed for a four-year school, but we want everybody to make a career living.
So the first way to motivate the children is they have to see the model. They have to see that. I remember a young girl telling me that she was graduating with her associates at the same time as graduating from DP. I was impressed by that. I was like, please tell me how to do that, because even I don't know how to do that after a decade of sitting on a school board. And so you have to create a template, right? So if you want more to graduate, create a template and show them that within the counseling sessions that they get with their counselors each year. And find out if, well, identify the children, if these are the ones that want to progress, where are their interests? I call it directional aiming. You're like, do you, do you like welding? Then let's guide you towards welding. If you like this, let's guide you towards IT. So in that, as Julie said, you will figure out, as you start to take these courses and start to take these classes, you'll figure out if this is something you want to do, or if this is something that is absolutely not interesting. Doing that is how you increase more. And I would love, love kids to save two years' worth of college, because I got two in college right now. I'm tired of paying for. And that right there would save you two years off your genitals.
Yeah, Jamie's waiting for this one. I do, and Dobbins Bennett does a great job. There's always room for improvement, I'm sure, but from when I was in high school there to now, there's way more CTE offerings now than there was when I was there. So they're doing a great job with that. One thing I think that you could do to increase the participation, maybe, and I don't know how this would be implemented, but a template for it might extend into the middle school level. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of middle school kids who would benefit from exposure to those type of things responsibly at that age. And then maybe after the fact, after they graduate and spend some time in the workforce, get some of the kids who have gone on to be successful to come back and get back into the program, teach the kids that are there now, show them what success looks like. And that doesn't have to mean a four-year degree. You can own your own business. You could be a welder, a plumber, whatever it may be. But get the successful kids who've been through it back to show the current ones how you can be successful in that area.
I love that idea. That is awesome. This is my favorite topic. We have 73 industry certifications that we offer from Dobbins Bennett. We have over 1,000, 1,000 this year to date, licenses, diplomas, and certifications that students have earned from Dobbins Bennett. When I was at a forum recently, I said 975. So you can see, just in the last few weeks, we've had that many more already earned licenses and certifications. The CTE programs are not mandatory. They are offered to students. So you need motivated students in order to make these programs really successful. They're kind of two-pronged. So you've got this dual enrollment that will give you college credit and can actually springboard you into your four-year university. My son got a certification in a computer, I don't know all the letters, but it allowed him to get an internship as a freshman in college. Very, very awesome opportunity. The other prong are students that are earning certifications and licensures that allow them to be work-ready the day that they graduate. We're talking about the Monday after graduation, they can have a career. So I'm very passionate. Please talk to me more. One minute is not enough. And I would love to share with you the wonderful things we're doing and what we can do in Dobbins Bennett.
And let us say thank you to all of those responses. Next question, the Tennessee State Legislature established the Institute of American Civics at the University of Tennessee to facilitate the development of Tennessee educators in civics education. And with only 24% of high school seniors in recent years who are proficient in civics, what do you think the Kingsport City Schools should do to improve civics education?
Thank you. I love civics. This is one of my favorite topics. If you're not talking to me about CTE, I think that we need to know how we became free, what makes us free, and the voting system that we depend on to keep us free. And I did, very similar to what you mentioned, I polled some of my high school student, or my high school student and her friends to see if they knew our local legislators and our state legislators. And I would say that the percentage is lower than 24%, unfortunately. I would love to see that change. I have some creative ideas that don't cost a lot of money. Maybe we can put up more posters in our schools with the pictures, the names, and the position that they hold, and change those out as our local, state, and at the federal level. They get fun and creative, but hidden at every level. We talk about it in elementary school. Why are we not talking about it in high school, other than government class? So I would love to see it incorporated in some fun, unique ways across grade levels and across subjects.
I agree with Jamie. I think if we, if I were to ask my kids if they've been talked to about this yet, at the elementary level, I don't think they could name many things that, many things more than, say, an adult could. So I do think we could get it started earlier. I also think it's important to just know the history of it. You know, civics is a result of the history that a nation has been through. So if we can, you know, establish a current connection with the history that has led us to these places, maybe that would increase the 24% proficiency. Also think it's important to, you know, we're a large group of people here to discuss these things. Kids have ideas, too. And if we can somehow incorporate them coming together as a group in a community and extrapolate that into civic discussion, maybe that would give them a direct connection to what it means to be part of civic community and tie that back to history.
Time flies when you're having fun. So I don't remember if it was two or three years ago, but the state made it mandatory that in order to graduate from high school, you need to not only take, but pass the civics test. And so every child now has to have a passing grade on that civics test. And frequently, we offer to our children as freshmen, but some of them may take until their senior year before they actually pass the test. There's no limit as to how many times they can take the test. But the state does believe it's very important for our students to know civics and understand. And so we actually found out about that in July and had to implement it by August. So the state gave us a huge amount of time to do that, and we did it. But all of our students are required to pass the civics test in order to get a high school diploma.
This is part of the cultural creep that is continuing to erode, and it's now infiltrated into the curriculum. I've told my children this. You guys have all heard it. If you don't study history, you'll repeat it. And so in this, if you do not understand the civic duty that we all hold, the requirements that are upon us as a community, and what we are supposed to do as being a member of that, then you won't know how to act as an adult. You will not know how to orient yourself. And nothing is more reflective of that than the number of people that don't vote. They do not understand how sacrosanct that is, how important that is, and those men and women who have come before us and have died to allow us those freedoms and the abilities. So I am all in favor of increasing civics across not only the civics courses specifically, but also within history classes, and adding extra courses for those who are so inclined to want to learn more about it.
Our next question, but I neglected to... Our next question, but I neglected to ask for the round of applause for the responses of our candidates. The question is, what is your opinion of Tennessee's recently released school assessment system in which five of our King's Port City Schools, including Dobbins Bennett, received a grade of A? But it was shocking to see that Robinson Middle and Sevier Middle received grades of C and D respectively. What should the King's Port City Schools do to improve the middle school ranking?
So part of that is a reflection of the whole over of COVID. If you look back at that, that is now four years of COVID and they are measuring the cohorts and their improvement upon that. Some of that will wash out of the system as we continue to improve it. It is always troubling. We just got the report from Chris too. We just had a board meeting. If any of you guys are interested, all the board meetings are now broadcast. You can watch them. They're all recorded. I made sure of that, that we got a camera in there. But this, this is something that we're going to struggle with going forward. As you see this, this group of kids come through, I call them the COVID kids, you, you have to put more emphasis and more effort behind them to make sure that they don't become a product of what we did to them as a, as a community, not, not us, but as a nation of what they did to these children.
The new grading system of our schools is very enlightening, not shocking as to how King's Port City Schools came out. Part of that is we know some of our lower socioeconomic schools are not going to perform as well as some of the others. That is not because we're giving less dollars there. It's just a lot of the home life that those students have and not getting support and not having parents parent. We are, as a board, are committed to bringing those lower performing schools up. Every child deserves to be educated and have an opportunity to succeed. And so seeing a C is not acceptable. We want all of our schools to be higher. However, the state failed us on not telling us where we ranked in those things. And so they have committed next year, when they do this grading, they're going to break it out so we can see the different components and we know what they exactly mean and where we need to improve. And as a board, we will do it.
I think it's very telling that our middle schools struggled right on the heels of what Todd shared. Those are our students that were in elementary school during COVID. We see that reading is so critical when our students aren't really taught how to read and do basic math that, and when they, when they, when they're failing in those areas, they're going to have a hard time catching up. So that, that doesn't shock me and it doesn't mean that our teachers aren't doing a phenomenal job at the middle school level trying to get those students caught up. But it does, to me, it's very reflective. I am not a massive fan of standardized testing. Again, special education teacher here. Standardized testing is not the best way to accurately test the knowledge of our students. Now, it's a great way where top performers to regurgitate information that they easily memorized or that they've committed to memory. But some of our students with test anxiety, dyslexia, dyspraxia, things that really help keep them from being successful on a standardized test, they may know the information and not be able to reflect it. So I'm, I'm a big proponent of creative testing.
I agree with, with what Todd and Jamie said is being on the heels of COVID and seeing how that affected the kids firsthand, especially during those developmental years of reading comprehension, it's got to have some bearing on that. That in combination with the fact that it's, it's kind of the first time we've seen this type of evaluation system used, those two things combined make me, I wouldn't say concerned, but I would, like Julie alluded to, I'd like to see more information and data behind the actual numbers that go into it before we decide that our, our middle school teachers are not doing their jobs appropriately or anything like that. I think we need more information.
Thank you for your enlightened comments, especially as it relates to COVID. Let's thank them. Our final question is about CTE again. Is the introduction of CTE curriculum in the elementary schools something that you would support? Why or why not? We will start with Bill.
I would, I would support that. Based off of experience with especially my son at home, he sees me doing, yeah, terrible at certain things, but sometimes I can manage to fix something at the house and he'll want to help. So I do think there is, you can make a very early connection with kids to do stuff like that at home. And, you know, even if it doesn't end up being a CTE career that they go into, they have some foundational knowledge that they can take with them into adulthood and serve their family well with. So I do think, I mean, you have to be responsible. Obviously, I don't want him welding or anything of that nature, but to be exposed to those things at an early age is not a bad thing at all.
I absolutely love this idea and great news. And of course, these, these two know for sure, but we added career technical counselors at the middle school level recently. So Robinson and Sevier have career counselors available to students. And I absolutely would love to see even more exposure to our elementary school students. I love it when teachers bring in professionals in all different areas. I've actually gotten to visit a classroom before and talk about wedding planning and event planning and hospitality, hotels, that, that type of thing, because it might be a job that they didn't even know was out there. I love that many of our teachers are doing that. I would love to see programs and curriculum that support that as well. So the kids can have an exposure to all different types of curriculums, whether it could be something that they're work-ready for straight out of high school or whether it's a four, six, eight-year degree program. Let's expose them to a lot of different careers as an elementary school student and then we'll see what happens with them in the high school level. Maybe if I'll talk to Bo Shatten and get an associate's degree in high school.
With my husband and I both being chemists, it's no surprise that all three of my students have degrees or working towards degrees in the science-related field. I was lucky because I, working with Eastman, I was able to do the eighth grade career fair for I don't know how many years, showing kids the fun of science, not the technical side, because I want the kids to see. A lot of the kids don't have the exposure to different careers. If my kids had seen different careers when they were in elementary school, maybe they would have done something other than science. I'm not complaining. They're all going to be very successful and I'm very proud of them, but it's just what they get used to. So if you have parents that are operators at Eastman, you might be an operator at Eastman because you haven't had a crazy woman do a liquid nitrogen experiment when you're in eighth grade. But I just think that having exposure in different things, not necessarily working towards a license or, you know, hold a class, but different exposure, letting kids see how to plum, how to do IT work, how to do whatever, I think it's a great idea.
I firmly believe in that and I'll give you a real life example of how that works. Streamworks was a public-private partnership that came in several years ago and they were tasked with helping out with the robotics. They worked all the way down with the elementary school, creating the LEGO League. LEGO League is a theater system into the robotics system in the middle school, middle school, all the way up to the 4020 or underwater robotics. From that, you now have two, actually three, world-ranked robotics teams that come out of Dobbins Bennett because of that. You have two underwater robotics, one at DBE and one at DB. And then you have the 4020 team, which was ranked 11th in the world and it's gone to world's competitions multiple times. This is beating the Chinese team. This is, this is impressive stuff. So I absolutely believe in, in taking this all the way down to the elementary school level.
Let us congratulate and say thank you to all of the students. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we will have closing statements from our candidates and we will begin with Philip Marsh.
Thank you all for having us here. This has been really great. The questions were exceptional. Thank you for those. Being a product of KCS, I'm very proud to be in a room with folks who are asking these type of questions and be with people who are also running for the Board of Education for the right reasons. We want our students to have access to as much educational opportunity as possible. We also want our teachers to be the best and they are the best and support them in the best ways that we can. Because not only is that important for their livelihood, but for the community as well. The better we can treat our teachers, the more support we can give them, the better education we can give our kids, the more likelihood they're going to come back to King's Port and they're going to continue to create a community that people want to be a part of. And that's why I'm running.
Thanks again for having us. It's an honor to be sitting up here with, with such qualified and passionate people. We all love King's Port and we all are passionate about the Board of Education. You can't go, I don't, I don't think you could go wrong. I wish we could just add another seat. But I am really passionate about King's Port, our education. I want to make King's Port the best place it can be because these students that are graduating, some are going to go off and they're going to nest in other areas, but some are going to stay right here. And those students that are staying here, I want them to be as qualified and as work-ready and career-ready as we can make them. As a former teacher, I want to advocate for our teachers. I love that we're paying our teachers as, as good as we can right now, but I would love to see that increase. I would love to see them be able to really support a family on the, on the salaries that they earn. And I just appreciate all the support that the Colonians have done in our school system. Me personally, I've benefited from your generosity and I am excited to be a part of what you guys have created today. Thank you.
Thank you for hosting the forum today. It's great to see so many familiar faces that you always say, I'm going to call you for lunch and you just never get around to doing. So it's true, sorry. But anyway, it's been a great ride to be part of the King's Port Board of Education for the past five years. I didn't know when I ran and got elected in 2019 that COVID was six months away. You learn a lot of things very quickly and, you know, the, the school system, we love it. We know it's a great program. We know that when we get together with other school boards, that King's Port is something special. We know we have issues. We know we have facilities that are approaching 100 years old. We know we have a $78 million wish list on our budget for this year that's not going to obviously get passed because we know that the BMA doesn't have that kind of money for us. But we also know we have problems with our students with mental health. We know we have problems with our students with truancy because they got used to that with COVID. So we have a lot of issues we still need to cover and there's a lot of work to do for all of us. So thanks again for the lovely day. There you go. I'm going to get involved.
Thank you again for holding this forum. I don't envy the position because there's only three seats available and you've got to vote one of us off. And this, this is a, this is a direct reflection of our community, the fact that you have these fine men and women that are willing to serve, willing to put themselves up here, willing to put themselves up for ridicule. I will tell you, the majority of the emails I get, they're not happy. And I've mentioned everybody, after doing this for 10 years, the number one thing you will find is no matter what you do, you're going to upset somebody. So do what's right for the children. Always think, how is this going to reflect upon the children? And take your ego out of it, take everything out of it. Just do what's right. When you do that, you get the right solution.
Let us respond affirmatively of the House Organization. And remember that Election Day is May 5th. Early, what does it say, March?
March.
Yeah.
You said May.
Sorry about that. And also that early voting is going on right now.
When is it? I'm confused. When is it?
March.
March.
March. Yes. Our special thanks extended to the Kiwanis Civic and Business Affairs Committee and its chair, Brent Mullins. And following the close of our session, we invite you to stay and get to know the candidates. And now back to Daryl.